Alright, so it's 101. So we want to be respectful of everybody's time. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. So as I said, for folks who have just logged on, I'm City Council Jesse Letterman, Chairman of the Committee on Sustainability and Environment. This is our Tuesday, November 16th, 1 o'clock meeting and focus if you or if it's either focus or it's our administrative staff behind the Focus logo. If you could just give me the co-host, just in case we have to let anybody in. That'd be great. But we're joined today for one agenda item, which is a discussion on the ongoing restoration efforts at Watershops Pond, Lake Massasoit. And we are going to be discussing possible future endeavors as well as an update on where things are at. We're joined by the Ward 7 Counselor, Tim Allen, and also it looks like we have a great amount of neighbors and Counselor Barbara Garvey with us. So I want to say hello and acknowledge her. And of course, we have our Director of Parks and Recreation, Pat Sullivan, who's going to be able to give us some good info along with other members of his team. I see Tina Sullivan is on. I saw Bob, what's the, Pat Garvey is on. Pete Garvey. So we're going to be able to, we got a few Garvey's on the call today. So we're going to be able to do a few, a few folks that are going to be able to give us good updates. I'd like to start by turning things over to Tim, just to give us a little bit of detail on what we're doing here. And then we'll hear from some of the folks that are working on the project now and then jump into next steps. So Tim, if you want to go ahead and kick things off.
Yeah, thanks Jesse. Thanks, everybody for coming. Last February, a bunch of us started meeting to plan the cleanup that took place in September. We thought we would do a cleanup in the spring, but because of the condition of the lake bed, we delayed the cleanup because of the safety issues. We delayed it until the fall. We tried to pull in neighbors from all parts of the lake. The lake goes through like five or six wards, covers, touches a lot of neighborhoods in Springfield. And the committee that was mostly, I'm going to read. I'm going to read the names of the people that were on that committee. Ellen Morehouse, Colleen Moynihan, Frank Ryan, John Wright, Pat Carney. Some of them will be here. I know some of them are there. We've reached out to the neighborhood, to Springfield College. We have Mary Beth Cooper, the President of Springfield College, and members of her staff were invited. About five other people. Some of them will be here. We reached out to the neighborhoods for my brother who lives on, on Pondview Drive. And we've got Matt and Barbara and a few other people potentially on that. We also reached out to the, to the Bassett's, who are the residents at the end of Alden Street, right before Wilberham Road, that beautiful house and the boat, boat company. I believe we have one or two of the Bassett's on here. And of course, the city people that have been in charge of the project. So we've got good coverage and the idea here is to get an update on the project and on the lake. You know, what's the status of the project? What are the issues with finishing up the, getting the water back in with the cleanup and things like that? And hear from the city people, hear from Mary Beth, hear from the neighbors, a little bit of that. So we have a chance to hear from each other for the first part of the meeting, maybe 20 minutes or something like that. And then, you know, by about 1:30 to be talking about what are the issues we need to work on in terms of developing a long-term plan or dealing with the grass that's in there now, or dealing with the fertilizer issue, et cetera. So that's my, my point of view. I just wanted to, this is a situation where the city council is really being a convener kind of thing. We, there's not a city council issue here, but, but we have, there's, could be a lot of city council issues, but it's not a city council agenda item. It's just something that seems like we have this incredible natural resource and it's empty right now. And we got a chance to make that water be better and meet, meet our needs going forward. So let's talk about it. That's the idea. So I'll turn it back to you, Jesse, and I think we should get updates from Pete, Tina and Pat on the project and the issues, and then we can go to Mary Beth and to the neighbors.
That's great, Tim. Thank you so much. And also I know there's many folks on here organized the cleanup a couple of months ago. And, you know, we had a great time participating in that as well. It was really an incredible turnout. So thank you so much for, for your efforts there and I look forward to your efforts in the future. So let's start with Pat Sullivan. Pat, do you want to give us an overview of what the current status of the restoration work that you're all doing there is? And then we can hear from Pete and Tina as well, and then go forward to next steps.
Yep, Pete's overseeing the dam restoration, so I'll turn it over to Pete to give that update.
Alright, Pete, go ahead.
So we have the dam, the Crest Gate being manufactured. It's being manufactured out in Sterling, Mass. Just got an update that it's going, we're testing it in the shop on before Thanksgiving. So it will be delivered sometime after Thanksgiving and will be installed. We are currently working on pointing up all the brownstone that surrounds the dam as well as putting the access road in. We're have about, just started the access road going in. That will give us access to the pump house. So we've been going right along. We got about 10 or 15 people working every day on the project, cleaning it out. We did have cleanup, not only in the areas that were, you guys were in, but other areas as well. We had four or five guys for about two months on the shorelines. They just hoisted out the last bit of material from the King Edwards Bridge. So all that material is gone. So we're pretty much cleaned up. If there's some other places that need to be cleaned up, we certainly can look at those, but for the most part, we're done with the cleanup. We're on track to, to fill the Watershops Pond sometime in May. We have reached out and spent a lot of time with Fish and Wildlife. They told us to give them a call sometime in March to see what we're going to do about restocking the area. The fish, we didn't have any fish kill. I know that sounds pretty gruesome, but everybody was very pleased on what we, what, what has been accomplished. The fish are still in there. We put some aerators in there. I met with Bill Guerrero and Kevin Roy from Springfield College about maybe putting some aerators in down around their area. An aerator is basically, not basically, it is a big fountain. And it just adds air into the water, especially in the hot summer months. That's when the, the fish are struggling with oxygen in the water. So there might be some interest in putting a couple of aerators down by them. It's, 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 the aerators, I think are cool. I mean, they're big fountains and they can be colored, you know, different colored light bulbs in there. So you could do some stuff that represents the school, school colors around Springfield College. We'll be probably putting back our aerator, which is down at Watershops Pond or the dam area. If, I encourage people, because it's wide open over there, to go behind One Allen Street and take a look at what we're doing. It's, it's cool. I mean, I'm kind of goofy with the construction stuff, but it's, we took all the vegetation down, so it's cleaned up very nice. We do have a bit of work to do and we're coming into the winter months, but we also have a little bit of time in the spring. We'll be working through the winter as well. That's pretty much my update as far as the, if anyone has any specific questions on the dam project, they certainly can reach out to me.
I have some photos of what Pete was just discussing, so I'm just going to pull them up on the screen so folks can see them.
Don't, don't do the turtles.
No. This was the crane sort of picking up some of the large debris that I think Pete touched upon. This is the installation of the
It's not actually, I see you clicking on it, but the part where the picture would be is not actually coming through.
Let me try one more time.
You're not sharing, I don't think.
Yeah, sorry. For some reason, it's not, it's not coming up, so I apologize. But they are, I have posted them on the city's website and on the Development Services Facebook page. So if folks are interested in seeing them, you can certainly check them out there.
Great.
And I'll share both those links in the chat box.
And Tina, did you want to add anything to Pete's update?
Uh, no, I think beyond the fact that Pat and I also collaborated on putting together a flyer to go out to all of the direct butters to the pond to sort of give them some tips about how they could reduce fertilizer and chemical runoff into the waterway. So that did go out over the last month, and I know folks have received that because we've gotten some calls. So that is something that we've also worked on.
Great. And Pat, did you want to say anything more?
Yeah, so I'm going to be presenting to the East Forest Park Civic Association about encouraging the homeowners, especially around the lake, and basically in the other towns that abut the Mill River to go to an organic-based fertilizer. That's what's causing a lot of the problems with the green slime that we're getting every August at Lake Massasoit. It's just the nutrient overloading from synthetic fertilizers that could, can contribute to that, that growth. So if we start at the lake and then build up the Mill River to stop using synthetic fertilizer, that's going to go a long way towards the cleanup of this lake.
Excellent. Alright, well, thank you all for the updates. And I think probably what makes some sense is maybe to hear the Springfield College side and then jump into residents and questions. Tim, does that sound good to you? Yeah. Alright, so we want to thank the President of Springfield College, Mary Beth Cooper, for being on the Zoom today. And we'll turn it over to you, President Cooper, to share what's going on on the Springfield College end and your thoughts about the future of the pond.
Thank you very much. Thank you for allowing me to be with you today. As Tim mentioned, Bill Guerrero and Steve Rullier have been on these calls as well as Kevin. I do see my colleague Damon Markowitz on the call as well. And so if I forget anything or miss anything, Damon, jump in and correct me. So, but it's nice to be with everybody. I can see a lot of familiar names. And it is, in fact, very important to us how the lake looks and how it's, how safe it is. Because as you know, we have students that, and also Camp Massasoit during the summer. So we're very anxious for it to be safely filled back up. It really is a treasure and an opportunity for recreation. It provides a lot of natural beauty, especially if you can take care of that slime. That would be helpful in August. I don't know about the school colors. Somehow I think maroon water might be questionable, might look a little like Dexter. I don't know. I think we would want to be careful about that, but I appreciate the spirit of it. And happy to answer questions that you have of me. Or if Tim, if you'd like me to direct any particular comments, this would be a good time for you to prod me. You're muted.
Hang on, Tim, I'm going to unmute you. You should be
Yeah, Mary Beth, I think the other thing, I, I've talked to Bill Guerrero and Steve Rullier and, and Sue Geyer. Now, for you guys, Bill Guerrero is the facilities and finance, like the CFO of Springfield College. Steve Rullier's the marketing guy. Sue Geyer runs all the phys ed programs, et cetera. She's like the dean of that part of the college. So the east campus and the, you know, Camp Massasoit, that reports up to her. Damon Markowitz, who's on, is a photographer for the college, works in the marketing area. And he, he's shown a great interest in this, in this. He was there on the cleanup day and saw the work being done. So I guess, Mary Beth, it was just what you would like to see, you know, if you had any special things you wanted. If the college was going to start new programs or anything, or needed clean water for the camp, or, you know, whatever things you need that I think it's our chance to, if we don't, if we don't do kind of advocacy here, I'm not sure. This is our best chance to have everybody together as much, as much as we can. The project team, if you will, the college, the community, to say, this is what we want and we're willing to work on it. And that's all. If you had anything there that you wanted to say about the future of the lake for the college relative to that.
So the other component to this is research. There's the recreational component that I touched on, and Tim just talked, touched on in terms of Lake Massasoit. And also our new students, the east campus, as you know, sits on Lake, on Watershop Ponds. And it is very, it's used quite frankly, frankly, quite a bit with our undergraduate and graduate students. But there's a research component as well in terms of our biology and checking the water. Very interesting about these aerators. And so we'd like to partner however we can. And so if there's an opportunity to do research projects, Sue Geyer and others can help us set up what that might look like. And so we're very interested in watching this as it proceeds. And knowing that it looks like April and May are your timelines, what else can we do to facilitate it on our end?
One thing, Mary Beth, I did speak to Hi Kanai, who runs, I believe it's a biology major. And he spoke to water testing that that department has done in the past and is still interested in, in doing that type of thing. Whether it is a requirement of, you know, or whatever, that's up to us to figure out. But he, he did talk, have me talk to someone else in the department that's been involved in water testing. So that's another role that the college could play.
Absolutely. And it appears that Chelsea has written in the chat that she's a faculty member here in Environmental Science. And she's very excited to have her students be involved in hydrology next semester. So in the spring, as this happens. So we've got a, got a handful of faculty that are very, there's Chelsea, that are committed to this project.
Right. Thank you. Thanks, Chelsea, for coming to the, to this meeting. Okay, Jesse, you want to go, you go to the, I, I think we should hear from the Bassett's, which, who are, believe it or not, they're your next door neighbor, Mary Beth. The house way down at the end with the boat company. Paul Zabel is on. Paul, and then we could go to the project team with Ellen and then the neighbors and hear their points of view.
Yeah, before we jump, so I'm, Paul, we're going to unmute you to talk. And I do want to welcome Counselor Justin Hurst, who is another member of the committee who's joined us as well. So Counselor Hurst, thank you for being here. And we've just gotten a brief update on the project. We're hearing from butters to the pond now about their experiences and hopes for the future. So Paul Zabel from Bassett, you should be able to unmute and we'd love to hear from you. Paul, it looks like you're on an iPad. So if you look in your lower left-hand corner, there should be a microphone button you can hit and that'll unmute you. Tim, maybe we'll give, we'll give Paul a minute to unmute. Paul, alright, there you go, Paul. Go ahead.
Hi, this is Diane Bassett Zabel as well, too. And sorry about our, we can't work the buttons over here. But so, so thrilled to see the community and the, and the city come together and recognize this very valuable resource, as you stated. I, I really remain concerned about the weeds and what happens when that water goes back over them in the spring and they decompose and chew the oxygen out for the fish. The other concern is some of the fallen trees, very good for fish habitat. I do understand that. But some of them are just really dangerous if a sailboat rudder is going to go through or, or be in the way of any form of navigation for any type of, of floating recreational vessel. So I would, I would love to know that maybe the city could get in there and, and, you know, keep the pathways free near that bridge, around the corner of that bridge. There's a huge fallen tree. Over the years, it goes straight across. You know, just things of that nature as well, too. But mainly that these weeds, how, how do you, how, how do you maybe harvest those before you fill the water in?
Excellent. Thank you, Diane. Pat, can you actually briefly speak to that? I know there is quite a bit of growth on the bottom of the pond. And what is the plan for that once you're ready to refill?
My understanding through our consultant is that they would just fill the water over that. They don't see an issue of taking oxygen out of the water by just filling over what's there. That's GZA environmental. But I would add, Pete and Tina might have had further discussions with them as well on that issue.
Well, you know, now's the time to get them. I mean, they come right out. I mean, I even tried ourselves, just, they just tug, tug right out. And it would be so easy if they, you know, you had a group of, of college kids out there for the litter, maybe in some prime areas, just a handful of them could just, just reach them with gloves and they, they just, they pull right out. And yes, when the water comes, that definitely does need to decompose and that chews up oxygen. Any decomposition will do that.
But we, we went through this with the DEP, the mass, the mass DEP, the EPA, as well as Fish and Wildlife, and everyone, as well as our consultant, GZA, as Pat is saying now. And they've all said, do not take any of the growth out, that it will die off and it will be good for the pond. It's the nutrients for the pond. So that's it. There's a whole scientific study behind it. So, or scientific research behind it. So the, the thought, the, you know, the direction we're going is to leave everything in place and that'll die off. It's dying off over the winter. That's why we're going to be filling in the spring because that's the ideal time to, to fill back up. There was some thought of filling in the December, but that screws up the whole hibernation of the fish in the wildlife within the pond area. So it's, it's well thought out and with a bunch of different regulators involved in our process.
Will you be trying to take some of, of the fallen trees back a little bit? Would you be considering that at all?
I see Kevin Chaffey on, so I would leave that into our water resource, environmental people. That's not on our radar. And again, that was part of, you just, as you mentioned, it's great for the fish and that's where they live. And so everyone's excited about the, the fish coming back and restocking it. We have, we're looking at maybe some warm water fish are in there. We're thinking about some cold water fish as well. We've reached out to some hatchery. So I'm not sure what the, the overgrowth, the status of that is.
Would, would you ever consider some form of, you know, a carp that goes in? You're going to, you're going to create a, you know, very mucky bottom now with the weeds being watered over. Would you ever consider an introduction that might work with other species when they introduce certain bottom feeding carp? There are carp in there, but there's, there's actual certain, you know, if you, if you research it, they, they are put in for, for weeds, if you will. And, and that might be something to explore as well, too.
We've been working with Fish and Wildlife and the fishery people are very into fish, obviously. But they're guiding us what fish would work good. What I've gotten from them in the brief conversations or the couple of conversations I've had with them is be careful what fish you put in there because you're not going to be able to get rid of them and they might eat up everything and kill other species as well. So it's very selective species that go in there. Not quite sure if carp is one of them, but you know, I was, I think we should have a variety of fish in there. And he was very cautious when I was saying, you know, a variety of fish. Because once they start eating, they kill off the other fish as well.
Sounds like, sounds like we've identified, you know, perhaps an area to, to tag for follow-up, just in terms of the, the type of fish we're stocking. And then also the navigability of, of the lake for recreation in the future. So I think we should put an asterisk on that. And because we're approaching 1:30 and I'd like to be able to hear from as many residents as we can. I think we've got those two points down. Mr. Zabel Bassett, is there any additional points that you wanted to raise before we move on?
No, thank you for the time. And, you know, we'd be happy to help with any aeration, you know, down on our, as well, too. You know, fountain of some sort, you know, similar to what Isla Meadow has in their pond. That, that helps an awful lot. And when it's very stagnant down at that end, you know, the aerating that water really keeps the movement and it'll help flush some of that.
That's excellent. Alright, we'll make sure that
Just one more point on the aerators. The aerators need power. So the power is the biggest, you know, it wouldn't be something that the city could set up a service to install aerators. It would need to be private people that put aerators in. And I'd have to really look to Kevin Chaffey to see what the, the permit process is.
Yeah, if I could interact, interject here, Jesse. Let's introduce Kevin Chaffey, who is the conservation guy, knows about habitats and stuff. Kevin, you're on here. If you could just make a comment or two about the things that have just, just been talked about. And then, then, then I agree with Jesse, then we go on to the neighbor, et cetera.
Sure. In terms of the trees, you know, my first answer is always, yeah, it's habitat for fish. I'm happy to entertain projects to move or alter, you know, remove the tree. My, my question always is first, just methods, how are you going to do it? Because even though the lake's down, it is still technically a resource area that we need to, need to protect. So I would just want to know how they would do it. And if it's just simply like, you know, reaching down from, from a point that's outside of the the lake bottom and just moving it. So there's like a, more of like a, a navigable channel. I think the commission would be fine with that. We would just kind of want to know how you're going to do it. In terms of the, the growth, I have had concerns about that as well, just for the same reasons that were stated. But the response from consultants and the regulators seem to explain it pretty well that as long as we get a good, hard frost and, and, you know, frozen ground this winter, that a lot of the plants will be basically killed and decaying by the time the spring hits. And then we refill it. And, but obviously, we're going to want to keep monitoring for oxygen levels the way we have so far. And if we see a drastic change, then, you know, I think more mitigation will be required. So I think it's just keep doing what we're doing now. And in terms of installing the aerators, I think it's an excellent opportunity. I don't think permitting would be too big a deal with that. But like Pete said, the main, the main issue is really providing electricity. So I can think of a few other codes that get really stagnant during the, I think Ellen, Ellen knows firsthand, a few codes over near the Garvey Drive get just terribly stagnant. So I think if we could come up with some sort of plan for iteration, that would be very beneficial. So beyond that, I think we're just looking at in the spring, we're going to really be checking in, making sure the restocking program happens. And I'm really going to defer to Fish and Wildlife because they're already intimate with the, the lake. They've done surveys. They've done, I think, bathometric surveys and stuff like that. They, they fish out there. So they know what's in there and what they'd like to see in there. And it is a warm, it's a fairly shallow lake. So the warm, warm water species are obviously going to be the priority because I don't think trout thrive in there. But it may end up being another stocking site as it has in the past. So those are kind of my, my quick thoughts.
Sorry, if I may interrupt real quick, just to say to Kevin's point about the water quality monitoring. GZA has been doing monthly water quality monitoring on behalf of the city. And those reports are all available on the city's website publicly for folks that do want to take a look at them.
Excellent. Alright.
So Jesse, Jesse, I, I know you're running the meeting, which is, is great. Just make sure we get Ellen Morehouse, at least, to give her perspective and then the neighbors from there around as well.
That's where I'm headed, Tim. But thank you.
Thank you.
So Ellen, why don't you go ahead and unmute, introduce yourself. And then after Ellen, we can do it via hands. So if you're a neighbor that, that would like to share a question or a comment, we still have less than an hour left. We've got a lot of time. But feel free to raise your hand in the chat and we'll go in order of how hands are raised. If you are not able to raise your hand in the chat, for some reason, sometimes some folks don't know how. You can just send me a message or kind of raise your hand on screen and we'll try to get to everybody. So Ellen, we'll start with you.
Hi, everyone. Ellen Morehouse. I'm on a butter to Watershops, 48 Undine. Absolutely so excited about this project. I'm born and raised in Springfield, so thrilled to be here. I'm really of two tracks of mine. The first was short term. We had a great community cleanup. So thrilled to have worked with so many of you for that. And the second is long term, of which many of you have already And the second is long term, of which many of you have already touched on so many of these things, um, with regards to. Water health, testing, treatment, what that looks like. Um, we did have a lovely community meeting where we talked about, you know, back in the day, folks used to swim in it. Uh, and so for me, you know, I once wrote a city memo, um, that I'd be happy to circulate or share again, I know some city officials have seen it a few times. But it just has some things for consideration around the pipes themselves, you know, the body of water design, to be city water runoff, how are we treating that? How are we capturing trash? Um, I'm so glad to hear, excuse me, that we are, uh, testing the water. Cause that was actually one of my first questions, like what's turning it green, how do we know what's in it? Can we form a partnership with some environmental experts and make sure? Uh, and then codify that, you know, if we have to have, um, some sort of legislation or something that says, uh, you know, we don't have any pesticides. Within a hundred yards of the watershed, you know, whatever the rule, uh, is from the experts, you know, how are we spreading that information through the neighbors? So to that end, you know, I've got a couple of long-term dreams in mind, um, overhauling the piping. And even maybe forming a neighborhood association to continue this energy and momentum going forward, you know, how are we listening? To the needs of Springfield College and that kind of a thing, so would be happy to circulate the memo, more just glad to be here and listen to the discussion, thank you.
Excellent, thank you so much Ellen for all your great work, uh, over in that corner. Uh, next person with their hand up, uh, is Amy Loyzelle.
Amy, you're muted. Sorry, I, I, hang on, sorry, I'm at my office and somebody came in right when you said, and Amy's next, um. Uh, so, um, I just wanted to, uh, I, I, I say, agree with a lot of what, um, Ellen just said. And because I love cleanups and, and they're super empowering and you feel like you're doing something immediately and active, um, in, in the project. But I'm really into it for the, the long-term vision for the lake and, um, I've already started talking to neighbors about trying to cut down. Um, I live down the street from Sullivan Park, so I'm on the, um, South Branch side of the lake. Um, and talking to neighbors about like chemicals and fertilizers and it's gonna be a really. Long process, I think, to, to do that and I think like Ellen said, there will have to be some type of rules and signage and. Um, like even just simple things like no dumping signs, I, when we were doing the cleanup, there's massive areas where people are dumping. Leaf, um, off of Alden Street that we found and, um, so. Like, ju- to me, it's just that there needs to be some, some actual physical and material, um. You know, commitment to passing rules, putting up signs, getting out materials, um, talking, educating people about alternatives to like. Full spraying of their entire lawns like six or seven times a summer with all these chemicals. Um, and I'm really, I, so I'm really invested in that and so I really hope that, you know, this coalition can continue with residents. Uh, city offices, city counselors and, um, neighbors so that we can really make this like, that long-term vision. And thanks so much for all the work so far.
Great feedback, Amy, thank you for being here, uh, next folks on the list is Debbie and Gary.
Yep.
Hi, uh, this is Gary, uh, I have, uh, a question. Is there any plans on the groundwater management system around Lake being maintained? At a better rate than I've seen in the past twenty years living on Pondview. I honest to God, uh, have not seen anyone taking care of the storm drains. And in my, I spent ten years with Kevin Chaffey on the Conservation Commission. It, it is a perfect way to relieve chemicals and fertilizer and nitrogen from entering the body of water. I just.
So what are the plans?
You know, are there plans to, to get something like this going?
Uh, Gary, I wanna make sure I understand your question, so you're saying the maintenance of the storm drains on the streets of budding the, of budding the, um, lake? Yeah, okay, um. Probably the vets actually question best for, for the DPW and we don't have Chris Signoli here, but Pat, can you speak to? Uh, maybe how, Pat or, uh, Kevin, if you wanna speak to maybe how that is impacting the, the body of water at this time? And then we can definitely put an asterisk on it and follow up with Chris Signoli, um, relative to the maintenance of storm drains, I mean, we hear. About maintenance of storm drains across the city pretty frequently and, and certainly, you know, oftentimes you'll see GPW sort of encouraging residents to. Um, clear out storm drains, but I think there's a good point to be made for in and around these bodies of water, um, having a special emphasis on it. Um, and there, there is a piece of equipment that DPW has, um, that was apparently out of service for quite some time, but is, I believe, back in service. That can address some of that, but Pat or Kevin, did you have any thoughts on how it's currently impacting, uh, the body of water?
Well, you have the leaves and the organic material that settle on the bottom of the ca- uh, of the catch basins and as they decompose. There, that's adding to the nutrient load of the lake, so it would be ideal if they could be cleaned out a, at a minimum twice a year.
And that would involve actually going in, right?
Yeah, like removing, removing the grate and then taking all the material out and then disposing of it. I can just speak a little bit on that, cause I do the report to EPA every year about, um, stormwater. Um, the city, this includes, I think, private catch basins as well, but the city has about twenty thousand catch basins. Um, so it, the, the goal is to never let them get more than fifty percent full of debris. But the reality is that happens a lot, um, so part of it is, is just resources, um. We, we should be prioritizing around water bodies, particularly the ones we know that have impairments. Um, so those are supposed to be, I think like Pat said, it should be going twice a year, but, um. I, I just think it probably, the reality that comes down to, to manpower and equipment. Um, so it's definitely something we can advocate for moving forward and I think the more the community is reaching out about it, the. So it rises higher, um, in the priority list, so yeah, the. A lot of the issues are, they get full with sediment, they get full with all sorts of whatever's in the street, you know, trash. Uh, and eventually, when you get a big rain, that kinda just, it finds its way to the, um. Uh, the lake and other issues with people cleaning up dog waste, cause that also washes in there, but, um, the, the nutrients. In, in, are the fertilizers in, in lawns, um, that's a tricky one, cause I think generally when it rains. Those kinda just get into the water and so certain catch basins can, can help with treatment. Um, but usually the main thing they do is remove solids, which is a good thing, um, but it's only good if you keep cleaning them out. The nutrients is a whole, a whole another, um, difficulty, cause it's, I think it, it gets dissolved in the water. It, it finds its way to the lake anyways, so that, the, the hardest thing we do is education every year to try and get people to change behavior. Cause it's not just the folks who live directly on the, um, on the lake, it's the whole watershed that washes into the lake. So that, it could be streets and streets away, but they don't think about it necessarily being on the lake, but the piping system all goes to the lake. So it, it's, it's a big, it's a very difficult issue. Um, so we, we do a lot of education stuff like with the flyer that they sent out, but in the end, it, it. It has to deal with like behavior change, which is, uh, is very difficult.
And Kevin, I, as, as you're speaking, I'm starting to understand the question from Gary a little bit better, um, and, and one of the things that we should keep in mind and, and put an asterisk on is. Um, you know, the ARPA funding and then the future, um, infrastructure funding that's coming, both have. Uh, dedicated, uh, sources related to stormwater runoff, stormwater systems, um, because it's, it's a big issue everywhere. So there should be resources to, to try to have some innovative solutions around this, um, in the future and Gary, thanks for your work on the Conservation Commission. We really appreciate it.
And there are also some, uh, in-lake options, uh, of, of treatment. Um, they're obviously more expensive and, and, um, complex, but. That is something we could continue to have a conversation about of our lakes and ponds management, um, u- using certain methods of. I, I can't remember the exact word, but it kinda like denatures the, the nutrients, so kind of more balanced, but you know, it takes. A more complex process, so that, that is something we can continue to talk about.
That makes sense, alright, thank you Kevin, our next resident is Beverly Holmes.
Good afternoon, everyone, um, I, I'm really just piggybacking on a number of, um, statements that were made. Relative to the long-term health of the waterways, maintaining that. And, uh, from the perspective of educating the community, uh, the, the signage. I believe is very important, the do's and don'ts, signage being in both English and Spanish. Uh, I believe that the high schools, uh, their biology, uh, uh. Uh, for students who are in this particular area, it's a very good place to start educating. Because it's hard to educate at the level, um, um. Beyond students, it's easier, uh, and not very easy, but easier to, to kind of start the young people. To understand the importance of maintaining, uh, the waterways that are to their advantage. So I'm just wondering, are there, uh, plans in place to view the areas where we see most activities? Where the community is coming in and fishing, et cetera, and, uh, putting up signage there. Uh, also putting up, uh, cameras in, in certain areas where we see a lot of. Of, uh, activity or debris going into, uh, the lake. So I just like, uh, comments in reference to that. Um, and you know, there's this whole thing, if you see something, say something, we do need help, we need help from. Anyone that is seeing something, maybe there's a, a number that can be called to say that this is happening. I, I just feel like there's more to be done, um, in educating the community, the schools. Uh, to keep the waterway, uh, clean.
Excellent questions, Mrs. Holmes, um, Patrick, uh, could you speak to, uh, plans for increased signage in the area at this time?
Yeah, we are planning on working with Putnam Vocational School, um, their sign shop to make signs, put up the perimeter. Um, around the lake, just on those area issues.
Excellent, it would be great, I think, um, maybe working with Counselor Allen to make sure, uh, all the different, uh, areas that folks are hoping to see covered are covered in that effort.
And with those, may, uh, can you hear me?
Of course, yes.
Um, do we know what information is going on those signs? I had, uh, thought of the do's and don'ts, I don't think community and because even myself, I don't even. Understand what type of water vehicles are appropriate for the lake, because many times I see those that have motorboats. Um, and there's oil leaking from that, so what type of information will be going on those signs? Uh, and is there a way to, uh, I, I like the idea with Putnam, that's a, a, a good place to start. Um, how do we continue the education process?
So we're gonna probably do the top five don'ts, uh, on the sign and then we're gonna have a website listed. Um, and the, people will go to the website for that further information that you just discussed, so they can become educated.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, uh, we got three more folks with their hands up, we're gonna go in order and I just wanna give a quick time check, so it's one forty-five, we usually conclude. Um, committee meetings in about an hour, um, so we're gonna be aiming for around a two o'clock conclusion, but, um, our three folks that are in line now, it's gonna be Barbara Garvey. Followed by, uh, the name on here is currently Mom and Dad, um, so we'll go to you and then Paul Zabel. Uh, so, uh, Counselor Garvey, uh, you can unmute. You should be good to go.
Okay. My question is really a two-part question for, um, Pat Sullivan. When you sit on the viewing benches at Sullivan Park, you see a lot of overgrown bushes. Instead of the lake, is that gonna be part of the cleanup that can be done so people can enjoy? Sullivan Park viewing the, uh, lake. And the second part is, the second question was, is there going to be any repair to the path? That was alongside the lake on the south side?
Yeah, so we just started a forestry crew with the Sheriff's Department and they will be doing that location as well as around. Venture Pond, this, uh, we're actually working with, uh, Conservation on the Venture Pond path around that pond and they will go over to. Sullivan Park this winter, there's a lot of sumac that's come up, um, in Sullivan Park that we wanna cut down this winter as well. And then on the path, um, that will be something we were gonna have GZ A to take a look at this winter and again, our. That chair is through with that mulch material that they'll produce from the, um, forestry operations could be used on that path.
Excellent, thank you.
Great, thank you so much, Counselor Garvey, um, we'll go to Mom and Dad, if you'd like to introduce yourselves, I'm so sorry that I don't know your names, but. Uh, you should be able to unmute, uh. There you go, you should be all set.
I, uh, we're the Collinses and we live on Pondview Drive and that Mom and Dad is, is, um. Was arranged by my son on the computer, so it's gonna be changed soon, but we just, uh, we're Liz and Rich Collins on Pondview. And my husband has a question.
I had about three before we started and this was so informative that, uh, I appreciate it. What I'm down to is, maybe it was said, but who is the contractor working on the dam itself?
Pete, contractor for the dam?
Yes.
Gardener Construction out of Jacoby.
Oh, out of Jacoby, good.
You said gardener construction?
Yes.
Got it.
And what, 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 what is the extent of the work that they have to do, is it a, a complete rebuild or, or a repairing?
It's a repair, it's a repair of the gate, the gate was, uh, last repaired in nineteen fifty-six, I believe, it was an old hydraulic gate. It was, uh, at the end of its life, um, span, so it was definitely in need of being. Replaced, it's, uh, newest technology, we'll be able to drop the, the gates down remotely. Uh, it's a much, much, much more, uh, safe, uh, the last one was when we were pushing the gate down. There were thousands of pounds worth of torque on, um, pieces of the steel and it was extremely dangerous. So we've also put in a, a access road to the gatehouse, which lasts. Before you had to walk down a little path with your tools to get into the gatehouse, it's, it's more to. You could drive down there with a vehicle now to maintain it, we took down overgrowth that was, you know, again, many years old. Uh, the trees that were pushing out some of the retaining walls and we're also re, uh. Removing a retaining wall and putting it back in with some fencing along the north side of the, uh, dam, I would encourage. People to drive down there, it's, it's, it's cool, I'm not gonna, it's, it's pretty cool back there, it's, uh. Hundred and fifty years old back there, we did find some old mun- munitions where we went and brought them up to the armory. And had the police department look at, make sure we were doing things safe, so. There's buried stuff there from a hundred and fifty years ago that we're running into, so nothing, no money or gold yet, so I'm still here.
So this project is almost finished completely, um, you mentioned that the water could possibly have been filled in December. But you're waiting until the spring, correct?
Yeah, we're scheduled out until the spring of next year with, we, we took some alternates, we had some bid savings. So, uh, we're fortunate enough to be able to do more work than we had to some originally anticipated, we're re, re. Reinstalling, uh, retaining wall around in North Side with additional fencing, that was one of the alternatives.
And Pete, I'm not sure if you could share briefly, I found it very helpful when the city gave context, I was thinking of it as an active refill, like water would be pumped back in. But that's not the case. I was thinking of it as an active refill, like water would be pumped back in, but that's not the case. If you could share, like this loose gate will be closed a certain amount and then the spring to refill.
Yeah, so there's a lower gate and an upper gate, lower simplified. The lower gate is open right now, which allows us to have about at the most 14 feet of water when we are, when we shut the lower gates and use the upper gates, will probably be around 24 feet of water. So we're minus 10 feet of water right now. So once we shut all the gates, it will, depending on what type of weather events we have, it'll take anywhere from two weeks to six weeks to fill the pond back in. We've had some really wet events over the summer, which is it fills it up pretty much wide open again. So again, it just depends on what type of weather events we have and how long how long it will take to fill. But it's like two inches an hour. It's coming up when you're having weather events, a little bit of weather events.
Excellent. Liz and Rich, did that answer all your questions?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you so much. I renamed you there, but it'll go away when you log off.
Thank you.
All right. So we're going to take our final two resident questions from Paul Zabel and Frank Ryan, and then I'm going to turn it over to Counselor Allen, who also has his hand up for his final questions and next steps. So Paul, you can go ahead at this time or whoever's behind that iPad.
Yes, thank you. It's Paul and it's also Diane Bassett Zabel again. In relation to to the signage, yes, people take their leaves on a blanket, rake them onto the blanket, cross the street of Alden Street and dump them over like that's the right thing to do. Can there be not only the education to why it's bad, but also can we have some signs that maybe would find them, you know, can can a few of those go up to to let them know that A, it's wrong, but B, they they could be fined if if they're caught. And that would stop because again, if you're not going to pull any of the the weeds and and more leaves go on top of that, then, you know, there really is going to be trouble with that oxygen. And and secondly, on signage, you know, the city lost a a young young boy a few years ago where three jumped off that railroad bridge and only two came up. And, you know, in honor of a little boy named Louis, could we post a sign, no jumping danger, remember Louis, something of this this sort up on 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 that railroad bridge?
Certainly, we'll make sure that Pat has those. And the the dumping it over, dumping the leaves over is a finable offense. It is considered dumping. I think a lot of people probably think it that they're doing the right thing or that it's just going to decompose, but dumping yard waste is is still dumping. So we we can see that addressed as well. And I I think the idea about the no jumping sign is good as well. So we'll follow up on that. Frank?
All right, I will keep it brief. I am am pleased with all of the input from the Community Committee Group and East Forest Park. We we think this is a fantastic project and greatly appreciate it. I I wanted to commend Beverly Holmes with educating the high school. I'm an elementary school teacher and I'm asking the city to consider some type of information or presentation to the elementary schools that do about Lake Massasoia. To Kevin Chaffey, we're talking about trees being cut down at Sullivan Park. I, when I drive Alden Street, the the, when this water is refilled, I think it would be beautiful that some of the smaller trees would be cut down so that people, those people abutting the lake, the houses there, as well as those driving it, would would appreciate what a beautiful environmental lake we have. The, I have a question for for President Cooper. She she mentioned the research and we we are thrilled. I'm just saying that would the college have a dock or do they have a rowing team? And while we're talking rowing team, will there be a dock at Sullivan Park for recreational kayaking? I hope that there never is any motorized boats in the area. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. I think that President Cooper had to log off, but I do see I think there's still some Springfield College folks on. Oh, no, President Cooper is right there. President Cooper, did you want to take that question?
Certainly. We do not have a dock. There is a dock off my house that is gated, but it I think that think the east campus area that has a ramp down area where there are beaches and also by Rally Hill on the other far side. So there is access. I think that's a lovely idea to have access for kayaks. Again, our, we we access it through east campus by coming down that sandy area. And we can talk about what that might look like. In terms of having a a crew team, we do not currently, we've we've tried to investigate that on a number of occasions. The waterway probably wouldn't be long enough for us to have to set that up. I know that we've looked at the Connecticut River a number of times, but we're open to it.
May I just end then with signage that speaks specifically of of whatever limited recreation we are contemplating? Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. We'll definitely follow up with Pat on that. Tim, before we jump to you, there was one person I overlooked in the chat, and I hate to do that. It was John Paul Zabel, Paul's son, had put in the chat, he wanted to ask questions on here. It's JP. JP, are you still on here with us?
Yes, I am. Hi, how's it going?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to introduce myself. I go by JP, John Paul. Paul's my father. Diane, my mother. Hi, Mom and Dad. I know you guys are on the call in Florida. But I'm actually home in in Springfield. And I don't know if you can see behind me, if you want to take a peek at the lake, it's kind of what it looks like now. I just had, I just wanted to, you know, remark, it's a great meeting and and I love, you know, what I've heard so far for handling issues for, you know, present day. But I wanted to say I have, you know, kind of my own concerns or or questions for the future pertaining to the lake and for Springfield in general. I am an entrepreneur in the crypto space and I don't know who here is paying attention to that space. But it did just make the local news yesterday, the West Springfield mayor just announced that they're putting a committee together to investigate how technologies like Bitcoin can can benefit their community. And I was wondering if Springfield is thinking of ways that it could could benefit Bitcoin and other cryptocurrency technologies could benefit our community. And and I could think of a few, one involving the lake, which we probably don't have time for in this call, but it's hard for me not to look at the world through crypto lens because I'm in the space. So it's just part of what I do now.
Sure, JP. Yeah, no, thank you for bringing that up. And I actually read that article as well and and was interested in learning more about it. So would definitely welcome you to reach out to me directly. I I think we actually met previously. And if you want to reach out to me directly, I'd love to have that conversation with you.
Okay.
All right. So, Tim, I'll I'll turn it over to you for final thoughts, questions and next steps.
Yeah, thanks, Jesse. Thanks to everybody for coming. This is a, we had great representation from all the constituencies. The college, the city, the neighborhood, the project team on the cleanup, the Bassett's. So it's obviously too short a window here to figure out who here is interested in meeting again. One of the ideas here was to have a committee form out of this and have good representation from the different constituencies, etc. Ellen Morehouse, who really coordinated a lot of the cleanup and has written memos and lives on the lake. And she's very interested in a in a, you know, advocacy committee. We obviously have some issues that came out of this meeting. So I would suggest that each of you, if you're interested in in being part of a group going forward, if you would maybe reply to the email you got on the Zoom to attend this meeting, maybe reply back to the city council, just hit reply and say I'm, I'd be happy to be part of a citizens committee. Or if you wanted to reach out to me, my email's on there. And my cell phone is So I will touch base with Ellen and with Tina and Pete and Pat and Kevin, the people from the city who are kind of coordinating everything so far. And I'm hoping we would put a group together that to keep this going and make sure we have follow up on on many of these issues that came up. That's that's what I was hoping for. I this this meeting achieved what I was hoping that that it would that it would achieve. And I'm ready to call it, Jesse, at that point, unless there's any last comments. I think there's an awful lot of interest in this lake. There's an awful lot. There's an opportunity is now. And we've got a lot of knowledgeable and energized people. So reach out if you're interested in continuing the conversation and we will include you. Thank you.
I would just say thank you for all of your work spearheading this on the city council and definitely support the idea of a citizen committee being established and pledge my support and participation and also the participation of the committee, you know, the, I think that a lot of this work can get done in the neighborhood. But when it does become necessary, you know, as we did today to bring a lot of different city entities together, we can definitely do that through the lens of of a committee meeting. And it's actually possible, too. We'll be returning to in person meetings in January, which we're all looking forward to. But we've pledged on the city council to keep a a virtual option for committee participation to be able to include as many residents as possible. And also something we can do is call committee meetings in the neighborhood. It doesn't have to be at City Hall. It doesn't have to be on Zoom. We could do a meeting on site with folks. So certainly there to support you in that and and we can continue to connect around those steps in the future.
Thank you. Thanks, and thanks, Jesse, for setting this meeting up in your committee and for running the meeting. I appreciate it.
My pleasure. All right, everybody. Well, thank you all for participating. This has definitely been one of the larger committee meetings we've had, especially since COVID. And it's great to see everybody, a lot of familiar faces. I thank you for staying engaged in your neighborhood and your city. And we'll look forward to working with you in the future. And at this time, we'll declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you so much.